Call the August 11, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Mystic River Blockhouse Park Implementation Committee of August 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
Yep, they look good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you Stacy. And then could I also get a motion to approve the joint special meeting minutes of July 14th, 2021?
So moved.
I have a second.
A motion a second, any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. And then could I also get a motion to approve the joint special meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Mystic River Blockhouse Park Implementation Committee of August 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
I have a second.
A motion a second, any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Stacy, also the standing for the... Under correspondence, we received correspondence from Keith Bryan, our Town Planner, regarding recent amendments to the Connecticut General Statute that will affect municipal land use regulations and may warrant future actions by our board. So we just wanted to note that and it will come back up at a future meeting.
And I'm actually, in my comments, I wanted to bring it up.
Okay, good, good.
Because I started going through those, but I'd like to delve into them for...
Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah.
As well as some of the comments stuff that was passed.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. In addition to the land use stuff that Keith will come to a meeting and turn and talk with us about, there's other ones that we want to add to the agenda. Just get it with Stacy and we can do a deeper dive. I'm sure for climate, I'm sure like for Newton or others who got me from...
Okay.
So then we received applications today, actually, from Brian McCormick and Andy Week, who are interested in serving on planning and zoning commission. So that brings us to three applicants. So here we are, next meeting, we'll link you to interviews and remaining after that. And then we also received an application today from Erin Greger, who's interested in serving on the Ledge, like help district board directors. It's just so exciting, she has a great background for this and she's the one who's been helping us with the 201 rental help campaign, it's just like a volunteer capacity. So it's great that she reached out to you and applied, so that would be great. And under kind of appointment, reappointments, we have on August 31st, 2021, David Ruffin and Carter Young will arrange their term limits for their time on planning and zoning. So we of course thank them for their service and their dedication to planning and zoning commission. As part of that, we would like to move Charles Sheen and Ryan DC, who've requested to move from their alternate to regular members effective September 1st, when the other two step off. So we'd like to get a motion to reappoint Charles Sheen and Ryan DC from alternate members to regular members effective September 1st, 2021.
So moved.
I have a second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then just as a reminder, if anyone's listening or here, we are still accepting applications for the alternate seats on planning and zoning. And I mentioned we've got 30 now so far. There's two seats open, but we will be accepting applications until our next meeting. Then under the Retirement Board, could I get a motion to reappoint Craig Esposito and Gary Shovel to the Retirement Board?
So moved.
I have a second. Motion a second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then just as a reminder, if anyone's listening or here, we are still accepting applications for the alternate seats on planning and zoning. And I mentioned we've got 30 now so far. There's two seats open, but we will be accepting applications until our next meeting. Then under the Retirement Board, could I get a motion to reappoint Craig Esposito and Gary Shovel to the Retirement Board?
So moved.
I have a second. Motion a second, any discussion?
Nope. I was not under, I was under the impression that Gary did not live in town.
He's the school rep though, for the Retirement Board, for their finance.
Yeah, the Board of Finance puts up two representatives.
Okay.
And he's been on the board.
Yeah, he's been on it.
For the Board of Education.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Board of Ed, Board of Ed, sorry, yeah.
And those are the two they put forward.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Then could I also get a motion to reappoint Deanna Lori Forsman, sorry if I'm saying her name wrong, as an alternate to the zoning board of the field?
So moved.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Deanna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then under resignation, Paul O'Neil Sr. has resigned from the Storyton Harbor Managing Commission, will send him an acknowledgement, thank him for his service.
When is, when is his term up? When would it end?
I can't remember. I can't, it's, it's open, it's not, it wasn't up, so there's still, when someone fills it, they'll fill out his term.
How many ADs, C's are there?
I think just, just his.
Yeah, we filled it.
Okay.
Okay. So under old business, I wanted, I didn't want to spend too much time, since I know we've already had a long night on Monday and we'll discuss this again in two weeks, but just on the, so I can plan for our next Board of Selectmen meeting, I just wanted to get a sense from both of you of how you wanted to go through the arc of, at the next meeting. And just as an example, what I was thinking and you have a handout in front of us is that will be our last chance to kind of present our say to them, the Board of Finance for their September 1st meeting. So we were thinking, should we run it similar to like a condensed meeting where we kind of categorize them as like As and Bs, or maybe even As, Bs and Cs in a category? Should we do what I've kind of done here, where we give like the amount requested and then it will kind of maybe Board of Selectmen reduce, you know, opinion or option of how we get to a balanced budget? Should we leave the balancing up completely to the Board of Finance? I just thought we, you know, we want to put forward as much as we kind of have our thoughts into this before it gets to the Board of Finance, or whatever, I would like Gary to put it.
No, I, I think it's important to kind of have our thoughts as well, not just, you know, that they're making the decision and that.
Yeah. And I'd also, because some of these items have been in SIP for years. And I think maybe a footnote as to when it was, it was first presented to the Board of Finance as an important project, what the rating was, and how many of them are still funded at a dollar, and what the impact to SIP. So being able to, being able to use these funds for things that we already have in SIP but haven't had the finances to do, I think like in an overall, initially just to say what the benefit is of using these for these specific items, because like, you know, and then, but I do think, I think like as an overview, that would be very helpful to them.
I think you're right, and I think maybe we could also put note like past SIP and future SIP, because like I know the salt dome as an example, or DPW, if we don't do it now, it's going to be an extra SIP. So they can project out.
Yeah, so I, so I think that would, that'd be very helpful to the Board of Finance. And then also, I think having a description as to why we have...
So I do have, I'm working on a, like a, like a half page for a description, and then hopefully, and I'm just really... But yes, that should hopefully be done this week, and I'll send it to you guys into the Board of Finance, because they wanted it obviously ahead of the meeting. But understanding like new things are coming, like I'm meeting with the Pocket Paper Center tomorrow, and the Home sign in a request yesterday, so new ones are still coming in. We met with Sylvester Foundation Inclusion on Monday, they have a request that's coming in, so there are, it is moving.
In addition to the...
I tried to capture them here, just this, the document I had, but they weren't what was in before.
Okay.
And some of these are like PNC, I just put something in there because I knew she was going to ask for something, and I wanted to have a placeholder, but that's not a real ask, I don't know what it was.
Oh, 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 okay, all right, so you were, you had those in there, you had those in there prior when you went through this, all right, and then, and then the reduced options. And reminding you why, because I know I was, I went to the Board of Finance meeting when you presented this, but why is there a reduced option? Is it, does it have to do with...
So that's the way I did what was requested, and then my take on where we could potentially make reductions to actually hit our actual numbers, since we know we have the 5.33 million of the requested amount, it's already at almost 6.5 million. So we know we have to make the cut, so I thought we should just put forward maybe our thoughts on where those cuts should be, and it was hard to do some of that.
I think that's even better than an AD and C, is just having the information and want, kind of, you know.
Oh yeah, I don't think we should, I don't think we should do it like an AD and C.
No bringing, just the, here's our tape, yeah.
Well, because, I mean, these are, I mean, when you look at, especially with COVID now, right, so, I mean, we take care of all the schools with HVAC, but Human Services HVAC has been, in SIP for years.
Yeah.
And so has Town Hall, you have no fresh, you have no fresh air whatsoever at Town Hall. So, I mean, these are things that I don't think should ever be, these need to be done.
Okay.
And this is our opportunity to do them.
Exactly.
And even the, I don't think you have the, is the roof for Town Hall in?
We already did that, so that's...
Oh, that's part of the HPA, so...
No, that's, they funded that in last year's budget, and then they're first going forward dots for additional money, but that will come out as a sewer SIP.
Oh, I got it, I got it, okay, all right, okay. All right. So, so these are things that, I think those are very strong arguments as to where the money needs to be allocated, and then they won't be on SIP then any, any longer.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I think it's good to be transparent.
And same with the, with the water line loop, I mean, I know that we've always thought it would cost $2 million, but now because it's been a couple of years, it's more than that, so that's where this extra money is coming from.
Yeah, exactly. The water loop and Chris, our Town Engineer, is still waiting on another, he asked for two kind of requests for estimates based on all the design and work that was already done. So we feel like they could go, but the first one that came in was at 2.8 million, and what we're getting potentially from the here market is at 1.9 million, so that's where the difference is. And we can talk more about this, I, I'm going to try and set up a meeting before this next meeting, but is, and I don't know, we were saying we have to talk to West Valley Water, we have a lot of people to talk with, but in addition to the town contribution, is there people who will benefit and tie into the extended line, could they be paying into it also, since we know it's going to, you know, run by, and we don't want to force anybody to do it, if they are going to benefit from it and tie into it, then potentially they should be contributing to it. And Charles Sheen actually has been volunteering and helping us since he did this in his past job, to kind of figure out what models might work, so he's been helping a lot.
So will we have that second estimate?
We should.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then things like the, the Town Hall drainage and parking lot, again, that's something that's been in SIP for years, but I think, like, listening to Barbara, what she was talking about with respect to the salt dome and the doors at the, at the DPW, fixing this will help not, I mean, I think, because the drainage is what it is, it's really hurting where we store our trucks and where the salt dome is, so like fixing this will help alleviate future significant repairs.
Yeah.
So, again, that's something I don't think really should be put on the back burner anymore either. Same at the 4th District Voting Hall, drainage and paving, I mean, that's...
Yeah, and that's a little bit just to get it finally completed.
Yes, of course, yes. So yeah, I think there's very, very strong justification for these particular items, so...
So what I can do is I can try and commit to by Friday, sending out to you guys on the Board of Finance, the little summary, and then that way...
It's just full stomach.
Yeah, by the next meeting, you guys could then use that to understand it better and obviously reach out to any of these people if you want to get some one-on-one input, and then we can come prepared to discuss, like, you, if you guys have different views on the reduced options, you, and we can try and recalc, calculate that before the Board of Finance meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, and then this childcare?
I don't know, I feel bad, I hear about them.
No, is that the one, although that's child and family.
The childcare subsidy, part of what Stacy wrote out.
But that's...
Yeah, it just, I, again, like I was trying to put on the sort of Board of Finance that I know obviously we have a fixed amount that we can spend, and since the federal government is giving additional money to people with children for that.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, if you listen to any of that, I, you can just, you can just take that out, so, because I think that's important.
Yeah. Everything in here, I think, is needed and important, but we have to cut it, so. Okay, so good, so good.
And I think, I have just one more question, so the difference in funding between Mystic and the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce?
That is because Mystic, it's going to come to us with a very specific pass of, a while ago, we had talked that 23,000 of about what they thought they needed for the project they're putting forward, whereas the Ocean Community Chamber had really graciously offered to act as like a grant pass through, and not just for their members, but for nonprofits and small businesses, and they could apply, and I actually, that one I did do, and I sent to you.
Are they reversed?
Oh, sorry, they're reversing here, sorry. The Ocean Community Chamber should be 100 and the Mystic Chamber 23, sorry, if those are credits.
And that makes sense, yeah.
And the same with the Southeastern Cultural, Polish, and that would be a grant pass through with a small amount going to them for like...
Okay.
Okay? Okay? So that is our turn. Okay, so thank you for bearing with us, Susan.
No problem.
So Susan Collin, our Director of Economic and Community, will now provide the brief update on our Route 1 banking project, Sidewalk. Thank you for bearing with us.
No problem. So, I have here a color-coded set, it's two sets of maps, and the green are easements that we've already acquired, or if the Sidewalk's already existing, that's coded green too, just so that you can see the parts that are already green. Yellow means that we're in negotiations with them, we've already contacted them, we've already started back and forth, but we haven't completed the negotiations yet.
And that them needing residents, property owners?
Residents, property owners, some of them are LLCs, some of them are businesses, some of them are attorneys that are, you know, the managing partner of the LLC, and some of them are just single-family property owners. The blue means that we only need landscape rights there, so two of the properties we've actually identified, once we got down to the nitty-gritty of the engineering, that we actually don't need an easement from them, we just need a right to get on the property and either do some silt fencing, or remove landscaping and replant it, or something that's sort of a one-time thing, as opposed to an easement in perpetuity. So two of those actually exist. So nine of the easements we already have, six that were ongoing, that were still working on the engineering. These purple ones are around the Pocket Tech Shopping Center, at that intersection where the traffic signal is, it's very complicated there, not only because of the interface with the traffic signal, the width of the road there, the presence of already existing walls, but then you're trying to pull everything up to today's ADA codes. So all the percentages, one of them actually, we're going to have to negotiate with the property owner all the way back to the steps of their home, it goes back that far to make the percentages work. So we're working on those things right now, but those parts are still ongoing in terms of the engineering. So, but we do have...
So, so I have a no.
The red one is, we, we have had one person say no, so far. I do plan, we do have all of the green around them, so I'm hoping at the end, maybe I'll be able to go back to them and, and talk to them about it again, and maybe they'll change their mind, but we didn't...
Or the Sidewalk will be here and then it will be there.
That's a possibility, but we decided that we were going to do this in a friendly manner, we were going to ask people, for the waivers, ask people for the easements, and that that was how we were going to proceed. There's a very specific way that you negotiate these rights away, I've been to the Rightway class in Connecticut many years ago now, and I've done this on other projects, and so we're just, we're doing this in the friendliest way that we can, trying to explain to people that this is about safety, and trying to make those connections. So what I'm really hoping is that, you know, we'll be able to have at least a good stretch, you know, from, this is, this is the new Dunkin' Donuts here, that's getting, you know, renovated right now, so just next to that, we have almost a full string of property owners on the south side that are green, the yellow one in the middle is actually driveway, so we may not even have to build a sidewalk there, we're going to ask them if we can build a sidewalk, but it's literally a driveway, so.
So we need, on, on the map, so the, which, am I looking at the stone wall side, is that the...
So this is the south side, this is the stone wall side, and then this is the Pocket Tech Shopping Center side.
Okay.
So we have a pretty good string of the green ones on the south side, we'll try to get some of those landscape agreements, and...
We're putting sidewalks on both sides?
We are engineering them for both sides. We do have permits from the Army Corps and also from inland wetlands, we don't have enough money construction-wise to build on both sides at this time. What we're hoping though, is because we'll have the entire plan at 100% specs and 100% construction plans, and we'll have everything permitted, and then we'll go on with the actual on-the-ground construction as far as we can, until we run out of money.
Okay.
So what we're going to go is, we'll put in as much as we can put in, and at the moment when we run out of money, then we'll have to look for other money, but we'll have a shovel-ready set of plans to deal with.
So the side that where the red one is, that's the north side?
That's the north side.
So we could theoretically focus on the south side?
We could theoretically focus on the south side first, in terms of actual on-the-ground construction, and then on the north side, we could hold those easements for later, they're all recorded, we still hold them, so if, also, if we found money later, or if there were little bits of money that we came up with later to fill in those gaps, we could do that as well.
As long as they have, you have all the plans and the permits.
Which we would already have, yes, exactly. So we're hoping to have a fully shovel-ready project and expend all of the money on time, and then at the end of it, we'll see what we have left. And some of it's really going to depend on construction pricing, which is pretty variable right now because of COVID, so we'll see, once we have those, you know, those bids and specs, what we can afford. And that's how we'll, that's how we're proceeding. So we're doing our best, it's taken a lot longer, I, I think a lot of folks have asked me a lot of questions, doesn't Town Hall have like a Rolodex of everybody's phone number and everybody's email, and we don't, you know? So we're working off of people's addresses, we're looking at people in the Secretary of State's office, we're Googling people for their phone numbers, for some people I only have an address, for other people I have lots of contact information, so we're compiling it all together, and we've also had one property that turned over, so I phoned them seven times, and on the seventh time, they called me back and said that they had sold the property.
I'll have to start over.
So I'll have to start over with that, but we'll, we'll just go forward and we'll look them up on the Secretary of State and we'll start over, so we're, we're moving ahead.
Okay, thank you. We're going to keep the work on, and people kind of forget how much we're going to do every different step.
Great.
So thank you. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you. You're welcome, Steve, we also can go home and eat, and then we can drop in.
Oh, I guess I have a question, do you think we might have enough money, just, I don't know, hypothetically, to do the south side? If we can get all the permits and the easements, you know, the, where the wall is, because that's...
That last part. I think the last part near the intersection is where I sort of hesitate to say yes or no, because although I have some sort of pie in the sky estimates of how much the project is going to cost overall, since some of that's still being engineered, and some of those are engineered walls, and we're talking about actual changing of the widths of lanes and touching the traffic signal, because once we come near the traffic signal, we have to update the intersection, so that gets very crazy. Yeah, and there's, there's unfortunately no way around it, we actually tried to ask, you know, if we only got this close to the intersection, how would that be, and they said, no, 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 you're coming near the intersection, you're going to do the intersection, so. So that's what I don't really have a good handle on in, in terms of costs so far, but we'll, we'll spend every last dollar that we can, and then we'll go find some more.
Okay.
Thank you.
So next is that conservation easement to the town for an improved subdivision at 152 South Anguilla Road. So Keith, our Town Planner, forwarded a request from the owners of the Howard subdivision at 152 South Anguilla to grant a 2.4 acre conservation easement to the town. The three-lot subdivision was approved in 2020 and set aside seven acres of open space, parcels owned by the homeowners association, as well as this additional 2.4 acre conservation easement over one of the building blocks. Easement satisfied the requirement that we have for the subdivision regulations and has been approved by the town attorney. So I get a motion to accept the conservation easement for the Howard subdivision at 152 South Anguilla Road.
So moved.
I have a second.
Motion a second, any discussion on the conservation easement?
I think it looks fairly straightforward from what I've seen in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a pretty spot to move it. All right, so a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so the next one is a drainage easement to the town where a swale at the Old Mystic Estates subdivision. So this again came from Keith, forwarded a request from Toll, Connecticut Limited Partnership, developers of the Old Mystic Estates subdivision, to grant swale maintenance easement to the town. The Old Mystic Estates 48, or 48-lot subdivision was originally approved in 2004, but in 2015, after the denial of the proposed plan modifications, the town in Toll, Connecticut entered into a Superior Court stipulated settlement, which allowed the development to continue after Toll's construction of off-site drainage, you probably remember this, improvements to Whitehall Pond and the Mystic River. One of the conditions of the stipulated judgment was that Toll, Connecticut grant the easement over an existing swale, lots 46, 47, and 48, prior to the homeowners association accepting responsibility for its maintenance. The easement satisfied the requirements of the settlement and has been approved by the town attorney. Could I get a motion to accept the swale maintenance easement for the Old Mystic Estates subdivision?
So moved.
I have a second.
I have a second.
A motion a second, any discussion?
So, I think it's concerning with all of these is, because now this is going to the homeowners association, is there a mechanism to make sure it gets maintained? I mean, not that the town wants to have and maintain all these things, but that's always been a concern of mine. You've heard me for years, and let, let's say this, oh my God. So I don't know...
Ensure proper maintenance.
Just ensure it's properly maintained, because if it isn't maintained, it becomes like...
Yep.
Or it could flood or, or stagnate, so.
So what I can do is I can check with Keith and with Barbara if we have any existing language, and if not, we can add in something about yearly checks or proper maintenance or kind of, we're left to check in if it's not to our level. I don't know if, if this one in particular is already done and we can update it, or if it has already passed, but we can at least ask and check.
And also, perhaps in the homeowners association language, in their bylaws, is there something in there that indicates they're responsible for this? Because you could have somebody buying and have no idea, and have no idea that, or is there, is it in their deed, you know, is there some way that they know that they're responsible for it?
Yeah, so, I mean, my concern is always some kind of mechanism, I mean, it's all well and good if you're responsible, and it doesn't mean you have to be out there all the time, but, you know, please, you have a willing, you have a willing expectation.
Yeah, what their plan. Are you guys comfortable accepting the drainage easement with the other thing that we're going to ask about these things? I don't know how time-sensitive it is, or, I don't know.
I'm not sure how time-sensitive it is. So if you want to hold it over, I can hold, you can...
We can hold it over to that meeting. It would be great if you could get some answers.
Okay. Okay, so you just strike out the motion, so the motion's not going to...
Can I get a motion to remove the motion?
We'll just, we'll take, so we get a motion to table that.
Okay, can I get a motion to table the drainage easements until we can get some questions answered about...
So moved.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have the next talk, I guess, okay. So street number assignments, the request is that street number for map 151, block 3, and lot 18A becomes street number 162 Hewitt Road, Mystic, then it gets 06355. Could I get a motion to approve the street number assignment?
So moved.
I have a second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last one, where we're, how much it looks like, is the request for a street number for map 84, block 2, lot 1, become street number 3 Farm Home Road Extension, don't I think they're going to get 06378? Could I get a motion? Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion?
Well, I had a question because it looks like it was Togwambs. So now we're changing, we're not just changing the number. It's also that little road is now becoming Farm Home Road Extension?
Yep, that's right. You're right.
That's right? Okay. So does the police commission need to know about this?
Yep, so they, so it goes through the police department, already signed off on it.
Okay.
So it goes to the police department, the assessor, and then it comes to you guys.
Okay, all right. So is the whole Togwambs for Road is now going to be Farm Home Road Extension? Or is it just that one part that is south of 95?
I think it's just that one part based on the mapping that Candy has there.
Just that one part. All right, so that, so then theoretically, we will have two others that will come in at some point in time for renumbering?
I would think so, but I can certainly check with Candy. Yeah, maybe that's not-
Because it looks like on this, what will now be Farm Home Road Extension, there's two other lots.
I mean, I'm approving this, but these are just my questions. Yeah, because otherwise we'd be seeing a bunch of stuff on Togwambs, but it's not just this one.
It's just that one. Okay, so all those in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you for bearing with us. The next item on the agenda is a comment on the public. Do you have a comment? If you just want to say your name and address for the record?
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. You'll hear me. That's all I care about.
So will you say your name for the record?
My name is Joe Rendero.
Okay.
133 Tove Road. Now, I can't say that I've lived in this town all my life because it ain't over yet. But down through the years, I've seen them come and I've seen them go. I don't find anything wrong with this town on a regular basis. But lately, I found something very disturbing to me. And that was how a private memorial to a fisherman that did not die at sea get placed in a place that is designated for the fishermen that did die at sea. I find this very wrong. Because if anybody went down there and looked at that memorial, would think that this man died at sea and left a widow with children. This is totally wrong and untrue. Now, in my quest for answers, I questioned some of the board of directors, too, in fact. And both of them told me they don't know how this got approved. I then questioned the president, Michael Grinshaw, and he told me that the board of directors approved this. Well, I don't know how the board of directors can approve personal memorials put on town property. Recently, I had a conversation with Sandy Grimes, who is supposed to be the head of the waterfront commission. In its infancy, I was on the waterfront commission for a while. And our job was to oversee the operation of the town dock. And it seems to me, and I believe, that the waterfront commission was never in discussion with this memorial. And I don't think the board of directors in this town or the selectmen were ever consulted on this deal. See, it is totally wrong. Nowhere in this town are there personal memorials for anybody that volunteered and did extraordinary things for this town. See, so there has to be something wrong with it. My problem is how did this go so far before it was found out? I tried everything to get it moved. And the last time I tried, they said it would be moved. Then later, they decided it would not be moved. Now, it was never my intention to embarrass or hurt anybody. But this is starting to bother me. It leaves open a whole lot of bag of worms, or a can of worms, however you want to call it. Because if someone else decides to do that, how can we stop it? And it starts a problem with discrimination also. You know what I mean? So this has to be removed and put in a place where it's appropriate for that. And that's very personal. It's for a personal place, not towns. Now, in all my years here, I've known a lot of people that have volunteered at different committees and organizations in this town and spent their entire life volunteering. And I'm talking about some of the firemen, people that drove ambulances and things like that, guys that get out of bed in the middle of the night in the wintertime to go help somebody in need. Nobody ever put personal memorials to these people. Some of them were very dear to me. On that memorial down there are people that were very, very close to me. Very close. And it hurts that somebody has got a personal memorial there with families that lost six, that were very close to me. These were my professors when I graduated from the Stonington University of Offshore Fishing. They're there. One of them saved my life when I was a little kid. Another one saved my life when I was in the process of saving the lives of seven other people, the lives of me and my crew. So this bothers me. And it has to be investigated to the extent where it should be removed. It is my opinion that the waterfront commission did not have anything, any knowledge of this. Because if they did, I'm sure there's people that there that know that this would have been wrong. And I think that's all I got to say on it.
Thank you for sharing, sorry, thank you for sharing that.
I gotta get close.
Yeah, yeah, come closer, sorry. But thank you for sharing that and we will look into it. And then I think just, do we have your contact information?
Well, if you don't, I can give it to you.
Yes, will you give it to us? We'll do some research. Thank you. Do you like Joe or Joseph?
Joe.
Joe, thank you, Joe.
Doesn't make any difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we'll go to comments from homeowners.
Sure, pretty quick, most of the committees that I did not meet in July. But I did want to highlight the beautification committee, even though they did not meet, had a very successful fundraiser for rain barrels and raised over $600.
Wow.
Really cool. And these, I mean, if you think about it, these allow water conservation. You can save money on your water bill. And it works towards the sustainable community that we'd like to be. I know they're talking about possibly doing it again. They were talking about spring, but I was kind of see if they even do it in the fall. I had a number of people wrote to me and say, wow, I didn't see that. So that's a really positive thing.
That's really good. And just on that, tell people who mentioned, look, it says there's something else. If they sign up for our town, like news alerts, they'll get things like this. Like we put it on the town news alert. We wrote, I wrote like geeky MS4, excited, sure about our barrel update. But they would get these things, like just another way to look at it. And we get, and if you talk to her, thanks Stacy, because she did so much work for that.
Yes, and it was easy to order it and pick it up.
It was so easy.
It was very easy.
You got two.
We got one. Then I just wanted to say facilities, even though they didn't meet, they're continuing to work towards trying to come up with something for the old district office. Hopefully affordable elderly housing. I know they're working towards that, but again, and they are not making this one viable.
And just so Dave, I can put it in an email and then you can share it with Paul where I can. But using the harbor funds, the line item that is new, that is inclusion foundation, the Sylvester Foundation Inclusion, is about trying to do due diligence on the Old Mystic site. So they are one of the parties who are potentially interested in it. They basically offered to take on a lot of the work because they already have all these people that are working with for the site, they're doing pocket tug. And so they offered to potentially kind of take on the work and doing that and reaching out to their different like architects and engineers and all that to do some of the due diligence that we would need anyways on the town side to help move this kind of stock property. So doing some of the soil testing and some of the potential things that we were talking with Leslie. Obviously, the big hole up there is sewer versus septic. And sewer with a moratorium, likely we're not going to be able to get that. So we want to see what, how much could a septic hold there? And in order to do the septic design, we need like a site plan. So to even get to the site planning stages, there's all these steps that we have to do. So this that's kind of in the, it'll be in the right, but one of the ideas to help unstick maybe that property. And then, yeah.
All right, well, I'll send him a quick email. But that's great. Yeah, my only other thing is, and I know you're going to talk about it, just on Mr. Parker Park. It was great to have the joint meeting. And I agree. And I think we probably should do it more often. And we need, you know, we are working on moving ahead with that. I did talk to DEEP this week because one of the first steps is this environmental condition assessment form. And I wanted to, you know, talk to them and get an understanding because it has, you know, it's completed by the owner, but it has to be overseen by an L and P. And it's a factual form. So I have really positive discussion with DEEP about that. And they're very excited and, you know, kind of want to stay in touch with us on this project. And would love to come visit kind of once we get out in the field. So we have some other steps. I know I'll be meeting with Susan to try to get the agreement.
Did we get, did we get the grant?
Oh, yes.
Oh, we did. Because I know at the, when we had the Boathouse Park joint meeting, we hadn't gotten, we hadn't gotten that one yet.
Not the grant, but you mean the form, the form?
Yeah, the agreement, right, right. We received the agreement, yes. Again, and how, what we have to do? Because you said we got the Stillman, Mill one.
And I did, he apologized, he forgot my email, that's wrong. So luckily followed up and then, whatever, we talked yesterday, Ned Moore, he's very nice from DCD. And then we talked, Susan and I talked with him, Jim Sullivan, Miss Murray, and went through a lot of kind of edits and questions. And I think all felt pretty good about it. But there are definitely still some questions. And then that's why Susan and Deb are going to be tomorrow to work on kind of updating the budget portion to be sure it's in the right categories, that's how they want it. And then I think we're pretty, pretty close.
And my question to DEEP were about the voluntary program, because there's several of them. And I wanted to make sure, you know, and they say, oh, it can be this, this, or this. But they have a definite preference. So I called to understand what their preference is and how we can work that out. And it'll be fine. It actually is the most straightforward of the programs. And even though there's a fee with it, which is, I looked at it before saying, why would we want to do this one with a fee? What we can do one without it? Because we got the grant, the fee is waived.
Okay, yes.
Okay, all right. So it's good. And so we're slow steps, but we're moving it along. And hopefully we'll be able to start soon with Stillman as well.
Yeah, we have comments about Stillman.
Okay, cool. No, those were really my highlights.
So the feedback I got from the joint meeting was that they were all very happy that we were there for the joint meeting. So I think it's good if we do it, you know, as needed.
I think because we have this agreement, I think the next meeting, we should make a joint meeting where you guys are kind of best.
Yes, I think that's kind of me agreeing.
I mean, I like the idea of, I mean, we're going to have a joint meeting with WPCA. I mean, I would love to see with a lot of these commissions, having a joint meeting at least once a year, if possible. I mean, the ones that never meet, obviously. But I think in a lot of cases, it would really be helpful.
That's an idea we can do.
Like planning and zoning.
Yeah, well, I know.
We have to play a joint meetings with Boris Finan. Cleaning and zoning.
There's three things that, so I'll give an update now on planning and zoning. So there's three things that happened on July 1st. And one of them is this new ordinance with respect to, you know, which Keith gave us the information on, that it has to do with, I want to get the right terminology in here. It has to do with ancillary-
Oh, yeah, accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling units. So that's something that, just in a brief conversation with planning and zoning, so we have an accessory dwelling unit code in our, in our current zoning regulations. And we're, and we're, I think, once, when it was adopted, since then, there have been 20 applications that have been approved. So we can opt out of this one. And so this is something I think we can have more discussion. We can opt out of it because we already have it. And it's already working for our community. So rather than having a blanket one for everything and trying to figure out where it does or doesn't fit into our current code or even our rewritten code when it's rewritten. But this is one that we can opt out of it. So that's one thing that's changed. The other thing that's changed is that marijuana is now legal in Connecticut. And you can have, I think, one shop per 20,000 residents? So we qualify for one?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, one.
Yeah.
But I think that's also something that municipalities can decide yea or nay. And planning and zoning, but that it might, that might be a good idea. That might be a good one to go to a town meeting on. Because they didn't feel comfortable saying yes or no. And I think for the three, I mean, it's just, you know, I'm just telling you what the-
It's like, I have for Monday.
We have to get to another town meeting. Another town meeting.
The state.
For marijuana. But the thing is that it's, so I think this, I didn't read the entire statute, but I think the state grants the permits. So it's not something that we should probably wait on too long because July 1, it's legal and I don't know how long it takes for the permits to go through. So somebody could go ahead and get a permit and open up a shop where we even have a chance to have public opinion.
And did you give us that planning and zoning, definitely, definitely wanted to do a town meeting versus them deciding themselves?
Yes, yeah, that's a, I think they all felt a little uncomfortable, like five people deciding this is an important thing. You know, it's been talked about for many years at the state level, so, but yeah, so that was one. Then the other thing that doesn't necessarily have to do with planning and zoning, but it has to do with legislation that's come out of Hartford, has to do with, and I don't have the proper terminology in front of me, but it has to do with the erosion control and climate change.
Yeah.
All right. So I know that the climate change task force, so I'll give you my update on the climate change task force. We are going to be meeting in a week and a half to discuss the budget. Because that was something that there's always, you know, requests in the budget, but-
They're not specific.
But not, nothing really specific. And I think the requests or like the need or the explanation for the requests come in too late in the process. So I've encouraged them to start meeting now because even though, you know, we're one month and a couple of days into our new fiscal year, the next budget's already started. We're already starting to talk about it.
We're currently starting our SIP meetings in September.
Right, so, so anyway, so we're meeting on August 4th, August 24th. And that'll be an open, that'll be open to the public. The neighborhood center is going to provide a location for us to meet. So, but also, I mean, there was a question about whether or not with this new statute from the state, that one, so that's something we don't have to do either because it's for, if the population is under 50,000, we do not have to have, we don't have like hard people to do like the climate change, whatever. But since we're a coastal community, it's something we really should take a look at. And I know Rick wrote a very good synopsis of this new ordinance. I was looking for it on my phone. I don't have it, I don't have it made in printed, but I think he forwarded it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so if we could-
I sent it through a couple of webinars about it as well.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the next quarter segment meeting will have an agenda item to talk about. The control, the-
Yeah, to speak, to talk about it.
Land use control board and the climate change task force and the stormwater task force. Because that's, because it makes sense to make them all one under this erosion control board? Since there's so many legal rights that go to this board, that right now we're that board. You, I think, you know, we just should understand like what are we kind of giving away to another group of volunteers to make, you know, pretty big decisions on? And does it make sense to have it all as one or should we have separate?
Okay, we should, yeah, we should talk about that. Because one of the other concerns was, does this new statute from the state, so is the task force used anymore? Is it, well, of course you're up to use.
I think that's a definite-
Yeah, but that was something, yeah.
Definitely still really important. And I can, I owe them a little, another write-up. But if you can bring up that August 24th meeting about the zoning rewrite and how much it would be great if they could take on some of the research and look through our current zoning, like where would they like to see changes or updates? What other towns do you have more leading examples of low-impact development? Or, you know, other things that they think we should be doing? If the more work that they could do, we'll better ensure that gets done and it's work that then can be handed to the consultant. So if they have the appetite to take something on like that, do you think it would be really helpful?
That people in Bradford are happy to speak with them or talk with us or talk with Chris? They want to help us because they really are a lot for them.
Okay. So I know at the last meeting when there was a summary of the things that are happening in the town that came from the task force, like suggesting different things, that kind of communication, I don't, anyway, they were very, very happy that there was more happening than they actually thought was happening, so.
Yeah, and we can keep doing a better job on communication. And then, yeah, and then I think if they identify specific grants, I know Rick felt hesitant in the past, like they, if they could do some of the legwork of like summarizing and picking out projects, we can then apply. But we just can't take on the legwork of doing all these grants. So just to kind of empower them, you know, they can do a lot more than they're doing right now if they want to do it. It seems like they do. So if you could take up them more active.
Okay. Oh, and then the, you know, I bring us Mr. Art Festival this weekend, right? And it's a new route.
Yes.
And the new route is really to, for safety and to have more space for the booths. And I just really want to say thank you to the C-Port for opening up their property for a good portion of the art festival, so.
Yeah, we have also the pledge light and the new president of the chamber proposed about kind of COVID measures and same- proposed about kind of COVID measures and safety and that was one of the key things that came out was that they were planning for this. Came from the beginning, that's why it's so much more spread out, there's so much more space between the two center court and also why even more so, so important that it came on some of the more commercial roads.
Yes, now it's the crowds.
Because now that would have been double the crowd, so now we're kind of moving it out of it, so. And I do know that, you know, not everyone is happy with it, but we're going to watch it this year, see how it goes and can circle back. That was, I think that was all I could have. You know, we've been here a while, so I'll keep mine really quick, so mostly it was the boathouse in Stillman, you know, that they came in, so we've already kind of covered that. But we'll hopefully try and do a kind of one week, maybe, maybe a little longer, but about a one week goal for turnaround and getting those back to the state so that we can start really moving forward, which is really exciting in the context of being really nice to work with, so that's been good. On COVID, I don't know if they saw what we are, the day to report on it, we are now, we live in county, a high substantial risk category for COVID. We already mandated masks in all town facilities, the last six feet is a part in the same for meetings, so nothing really changing there. I did talk with other mayor of the first segment, including Jeff Callahan, about the executive order to give municipalities the authority to like basically mandate that everywhere. And it was pretty much universal that no one else in our area wanted to do that with the understanding that it's really was a tool for a city in particular. Like we may have been advocating for it with the understanding that they have a, like only like a fifty percent vaccination rate and obviously crowded facilities, and so they were likely, I think, to take the governor up on that offer. So for now, we have no plans to do that at Fledgelight and also didn't recommend it, so if you get questions, we're not planning to mandate it.
And we have a high vaccination rate.
We're close for, I think for fully vaccinated, last year I looked, we were at like sixty-five percent.
Okay.
Sixty-eight for one, always one dose. The most stat includes everybody, like even hundred twelve, so we need to kind of break it down for the over twelve to, but for our like sixty-five plus, we're at a hundred percent.
Okay.
Maybe some sense of status, but. So that, that for COVID, trying to encourage people to get vaccinated if they can and haven't, with the understanding that everybody can get vaccinated.
Yeah, I have a family member that can.
Yes.
Just allergic to every single ingredient in it and.
Yeah, exactly, with the undertaste of the pen. And the bat is really important. And then the last one is the veterans, so Stacy's been working so hard on the veterans monument. And last weekend she worked at Stonington Memorial Village Fair and had some other volunteers help out. And this weekend she got us a spot at the Mystic Art Festival, so we have a bunch of different volunteers, if you guys want to pop down there, we're on Cottrell Street. And we'll be down there all weekend and again, a lot of different volunteers stepped up to help out, which is really great. And we have some cute things, so somebody donated some cards that we can sell. We sit connecting the ocean community chamber, giving us doing pop-up books to sell and we'll get all the money for the veterans. And then the rec program, cut camp, paint, have kids paint rocks. So kind of different tiers of money that will pay if you donate five dollars, you can take a rock or a card, if you do, I think the book is forty. So, and then just also donation. So we're up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Wow, great.
Wow, that's great. It is great, you just can't picture the bigger hundred and eighty gold. But it is really great and Stacy's been following up with a lot of grants she applied for that we haven't heard back from yet. So just trying to see if there's something, one or two of those, if they were decent sized, it really helps me get. I don't know what else to say. Alright, anything else? Nothing else, we can adjourn, six twenty-four.